Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the June thirteenth Campbell County School Board meeting. We will open with a pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Well, we're going to open with one of our favorite parts of being on the school board when we get to meet our valedictorians and salutatorians. And so I guess we will start with Dr. Rinella for the introductions.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Dr. Johnson, members of the board. It's a privilege tonight to be here to help present the valedictorians and salutatorians of our high schools for the class of 2022. Before I begin, I'd like to extend a note of appreciation to our principals and our staff members back at the schools for their continued support and their service to our students, certainly to our parents that are here, their support for Campbell County Public Schools, and emphasizing and putting an emphasis, excuse me, on their child's education. And to the valedictorians and salutatorians, thank you very much for being the best and brightest that we have to offer. It's truly a privilege. When I sat for most of the graduation ceremonies and heard your speeches and all of your accomplishments, it's quite impressive. So congratulations. What we're going to do this evening is we're going to start off with Brookville High School and then go to Rustburg High School, William Campbell, and then Alta Vista will conclude the evening. The principal will call up the salutatorian first, then the valedictorian. Salutatorian will sit down, valedictorian come up, recognize both of those, and then we'll do a group picture at the very end with the students and the boards and the family members. So again, thank you, and we'll start off with Mrs. White in Brookville High School.
Good evening, Dr. Johnson, Chair, Dr. Miller, School Board members, central office staff, parents and students. My name is Christine White and I'm principal of Brookville High School. I am honored to introduce you to our salutatorian, Kayla Shay-Riggleman. We've done this a couple times already. Okay, Kayla is the daughter of Newton and Gwen Riggleman. Kayla resides at 103 Buckingham Drive, Lynchburg, Virginia. Kayla was a member of the marching band for three years, where she served as section co-leader her 10th and 11th grade years, a member of the Lynchburg Symphony Youth Orchestra her 10th through 12th grade years, a member of jazz band and National Honor Society for two years, class secretary her 10th grade year, concert band, symphonic band and key club for one year. Kayla was all district symphonic band her 10th and 12th, 10th, ninth and 10th grade. She was a part of the early college program and graduated summa cum laude from Central Virginia Community College with an associate's degree. Kayla will be attending Liberty University where she will be a part of the honors program. I am now pleased to introduce to you our valedictorian, Tyreek Amadou Saidou. He is the son of Saidou Amadou and Dina Odouli. Tyreek resides at 228 Oakdale Circle, Lynchburg, Virginia. Tyreek played soccer for two years where he served as captain his freshman year. He has been a member of the National Honor Society for two years. In ninth grade, Tyreek received his NOCTI certification, which certifies him to use CAD in engineering program. In 10th grade, he earned the HOBE certificate of recognition, which certifies his completion of the Hugh O'Brien Youth Leadership Program. In 11th grade, Tyreek received the Excellence in Research Award at the Central Virginia Governor's School for Exceptional Work Ethic and Perseverance while conducting the year-long junior research project, as well as the Junior Science and Humanity Symposium Certificate of Participation for those who were invited and presented their research at the symposium, and the Central Virginia Regional Science Fair Certificate of Participation awarded to those who presented their research at the fair. In 12th grade, Tyreek was awarded the Larvy Mensah Memorial Scholarship awarded by the Central Virginia Governor's School, given to someone who demonstrates optimism and positivity to those around them. And Tyreek earned straight A's, 10th, 11th and 12th grades, taking our most challenging courses. I did not mention that pre-AP class that got him a B in ninth grade. Last summer, Tyreek started volunteering in the ER at Lynchburg General, as well as volunteer at the Lynchburg Daily Bread. What's so fantastic about Tyreek is that he did all of these things while working at Kroger over 30 hours a week. Tyreek will be attending the University of Virginia. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Amy Hale, principal at Rustburg High School. I'm Dr. Johnson, Dr. Miller and members of the board. Our salutatorian is not here this evening, but I do want to tell you about her. Her name is Alexis Blunt, and she is the daughter of Samantha and Robert Fazio and resides at 1111 Dotson Drive in Rustburg. Alexis is compassionate, empathetic and dedicated to her studies. She has completed challenging coursework throughout her high school career and also works outside of school. She has also been involved in National Honor Society. She will attend Longwood University in the fall to study psychology and eventually become a mental health counselor. She wants to help people through their challenging times, and we're very proud of Alexis and sad she could not be here this evening. Next, I would like to introduce Frank Austin Wright III, our valedictorian, if he could come forward with his family. So Austin is the son of Frank and Kristen Wright and resides at 1277 Tobacco Lane in Brookneal. He is an outstanding student, citizen and athlete, and also graduated from the Central Virginia Governor's School for Science and Technology. As a faculty, we appreciate Austin's dependable nature. He is always willing to help anyone in need. He is a leader in our school. Throughout his tenure at Rustburg High School, he has served as class president, SCA vice president, and participated on the NHS leadership team. He was also a captain on the cross-country and swim and dive teams. He enjoys participating in many school organizations from Scholastic Bowl to band to yearbook. Austin has received several awards throughout his high school career, including the prestigious Hugh T. Pendleton Award of Excellence. He was also selected to Boise State his junior year and, as mentioned, was elected as 10th grade class president and then studi body vice president in 11th grade. Austin placed first in the junior division research paper at the National History Day regional competition in 2017 and was a finalist for the National Merit Scholarship. Outside of school, Austin actively chooses to make community service a priority in his life, volunteering for Gleaning for the World and the Blue Ridge Food Bank. He understands the importance of citizenship and service for the betterment of himself and his community. He will attend the University of Virginia in the fall to study history. Congratulations, Austin.
Could I have Madison Rokes join me and her mother? I'm pleased to announce or introduce you to our salutatorian for William Campbell, Madison Grace Rokes. Madison is the daughter of Todd and Crystal Rokes of 5910 Cover Bridge Road in Gladys. While at William Campbell, Madison was active in the marching band, serving as the drum major her senior year. She was a member of the Beta Club and played tennis as well. Madison plans to attend James Madison University while she will major in psychology. She received the Madison Academic Award for Excellence for $10,000. In addition, as an early college student, Madison received her associate degree from Central Virginia Community College last month. She is also the winner of the William Campbell Leadership Scholarship in the amount of $500 and a scholarship from Southside Electric Cooperative in the amount of $2,000. Madison was also the recipient of the prestigious JP Stevens Award in English for William Campbell. And I proudly present to you our salutatorian, Ms. Madison Rokes. Sarah and her mother. William Campbell's valedictorian for the class of 2022 is Ms. Sarah Catherine Holt. Sarah is the daughter of Laura and Jerry Holt of 306 Skyline View Drive in Gladys. While at William Campbell, Sarah was active in marching band, as well as indoor/outdoor track, cross-country, softball, ACE, Beta Club, and served as her class president this year. She also attended Central Virginia Gov. School, where her junior research project was published on freshwater algae. Sarah will be attending the University of Virginia, where she plans to major in biology or pursue a pre-medicine track. She also plans to be active in the Cavalier Marching Band. Sarah represented William Campbell at Virginia Girls State in 2021 and has received the William C. Folk Scholarship, the Walker Mile Scholarship, a Southside Electric Scholarship in the amount of $1,000, the Fray Charitable Trust Scholarship in the amount of $5,000, and the Sterling Meadows Scholarship also in the amount of $5,000. Sarah was also recipient of two JP Stevens Awards, one in mathematics and one in science. I proudly present to you William Campbell's valedictorian, Ms. Sarah Holt.
Good evening, Dr. Johnson, Dr. Miller, members of the board, our senior staff and our guests. I'm nonprofit principal at Alta Vista Combined School, and I'm going to start off tonight. It's my great pleasure to recognize two wonderful young ladies, both of whom I've had the opportunity and the pleasure to watch compete on the tennis courts at a very high level, as well as their academic standings as too. I'm going to ask at this time of our salutatorian, Ms. Ashley Lynn Witt, and her parents, please come forward at this time. Ashley is the daughter of Jonathan and Candace Witt. They reside at 7 North Gate Court, Lynch Station, Virginia. Her school activities that she has participated in include cross-country in grade seven, the pep band also in seventh grade, concert band for grades six through nine, junior varsity volleyball in grades eight through 10. She's been a member of the Spanish Club when she was in the 10th grade, varsity tennis for grades nine through 12, and has also, she was also a member of our Campbell County Early College Program. Her honors and awards that she's received, she's been in all county concert band, she has received the President's Education Award when in grade eight, she was a member of the National Junior Honor Society, she was also a member of the National Honor Society, she has made principals list, AB honor roll, and again, attended the Central Virginia Community College, excuse me, received honors while at Central Virginia Community College. She's a governor scholar and of course, she is our proud salutatorian of Alta Vista Combined School. Her plans in the future are to, she's going to be attending Liberty University in the fall, where she will major in psychology. It's my pleasure to present to you our salutatorian, Ashley Lynn Witt. At this time, I'm going to ask our valedictorian, Natalie Marie Pickrell and her family to please come forward. Natalie is the daughter of Chris and Tina Pickrell. They reside at 1603 Avondale Drive in Alta Vista. Her school activities include National Junior Honor Society, National Honor Society in the junior and senior year, tennis, ninth, 10th, 11th and 12th grade, cross-country, 9th and 10th grade, swim in the 9th and 10th grade, also a member of the Spanish Club, 9th and 10th grade, the astronomy club in 9th grade, and has helped out with band and the band boosters in her 9th grade year. She was in National Junior Honor Society as well as National Honor Society. She has received her associate's degree from CBCC, will be attending University of Lynchburg in the fall, and has received the Hopwood Scholarship valued at $21,000. Her future plans, of course, as I said before, to go to the University of Lynchburg, where she will master, or excuse me, where she will pursue her master's degree in athletic training. It is my great pleasure to present to you our valedictorian, Natalie Pickrell. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to invite you up for pictures and... So you're welcome to stay for the rest of our exciting board meeting, but you also can gracefully exit if you don't. Again, congratulations to all of you. So we're going to continue, we're going to hear matters from the floor, and our first person who signed up, Mr. David Keller. Yeah, remind, remember, please state your name and an address in three minutes and I'll be respectful of that.
I forgot my address for a second, I'm sorry about that. My name is David Keller. I live at 101 Collinage Street, apartment 108 over in Lynchburg, and I want to thank the board for letting me come out tonight. I've been a member of Campbell County, working in various programs since 2015, where I got my first marching band job, working with Matt Farley in the percussion section. I got a chance to work with him. Took 2016, went to Amherst for a bit, but came back in 2017 to work with Rustburg and Mike Straw. And I got to work over at Rustburg Middle as a para, and then I thankfully, the last two years have been over at Alta Vista Combined, working for Mr. Prophet and their team as a special education teacher. One of the things I would like to bring up to attention tonight is support staff compensation. It's one of those things, especially in regards to our para professionals. I got to spend two years as one at Rustburg Middle, and I think that was some of the most invaluable time of my life. Some of my responsibilities included a long list of things, which was providing accommodations to students either with behavior disabilities or learning disabilities, reading tests on stuff like that, as well as collecting data for those with more behavior issues, collecting data, there was some note cleaning I did for a manifestation of termination, as well as a bunch of other stuff like that. I know that was my responsibilities, and there's even more on the adaptive side that I have not had the opportunity to be a part of, which is long and extensive, and it's oftentimes at a lower pay grade than I think some of us are, as a thing, because it's one of those things, sorry, lost track for a sec. So one of the things I saw from the board meeting, I think I saw somewhere, I want to make sure I'm correct in this, that the para professional proposal for next year is $19.300 a year. With the state average being 28.9, I'm kind of concerned for my friends in that department over there. I know there is one school in the area that this past school year lost five para professionals to a private organization doing essentially the same responsibilities for an organization started by a former para at that school, and the principal at the school looked at the different pay grade and went, you kind of have to take this job because of that. With the housing market increasing as it is, as well as inflation and gas prices going up as high as it is, our para professionals in the special education department are oftentimes working for our special education principal and as our department, our right hands. I don't get the chance to go into most history and science classrooms, and most of my IEPs I've written are based off the data I get from them. Leann Hendricks at Alta Vista and Kelly Smith have been some of the most invaluable resources, especially since I was in Alta Vista only two years. Ms. Hendricks had some kids she'd been teaching since YMCA, so that when a student came up, I could get like their entire life history, and that's something that if I did not have that, I wouldn't know who they are, I wouldn't know how to address which specific parent, which certain way, which we all know can be very interesting at times. But that department, as well as my time at Rustburg Middle with Kristy Kundoff and Suzette Pyramid, I think made me the teacher I am. And I want to make sure we can get more of that, as well as retaining it in an industry where we know where education pay is going, and we know we're kind of losing some educators all the time to stuff like that. But I want to make sure our para professionals and those in our support staff specifically are taken care of as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Ms. Crystal Coleman?
Good evening. I'm Crystal Coleman from Alta Vista, Virginia. Since the last board meeting, I've taken the time to yet again read all of the school policies. It's not my first time, it's not my first rodeo reading them, and if you ever want to really read, read every word, because we've got policies for this and we've got policies for that, and we've got policies for supplemental material selection, and we've got policies that parents can opt out for family life, and we've got policies acceptable computer use, and we've got policies for teaching about controversial issues, which I'm not too sure that we don't need to rewrite that. We've got policies about public complaints about learning resources and textbook selection, and supposedly some sort of notice that parents are given to comment on textbook selections. I worked here since 1999, and for God's sakes, I never saw one of those in my life, so I'm not sure where that's being distributed. We've got policies on distribution of informational materials. Guidance department can't have any kind of a group without a parent permission, but the policy on library books is pretty much, you can, they must have library books and they must have media, and that's pretty much it. It's about two sentences. So, last month, I provided you with 11 pages, about a month and more than a month, because I don't blindside anybody, I gave you perfect opportunity, everyone on the board, to comment on it, to research it, and they're still there, except for one thing that was removed, and that was probably the mistake that was mentioned. That in those books and in that library content, there was graphic details of homosexual rape, graphic sexual content described in detail, molestation, graphic, graphic, graphic. And so what do I find when I look at it again? Let me read it to you. Give me a second here. Excuse me, I have too many papers. I'll read you one of the excerpts. "You're lucky," he says, "that Habib is your first one. I close my eyes, the room pitches this way and that way. You can tell the others that it was Habib. I open my eyes, watch him squeeze my other breast, and wonder, who is this Habib he keeps talking about? He unbuckles his belt, once before she sold Habib used goods. The fish lips man removes my dress. I wait for myself to protest, but nothing happens. Habib is good with the ladies, then he is on top of me and something hot and insistent is between my legs. I could go on and on and on. I'm surprised nobody stopped me, because really, is this content that I should be saying out loud here? Probably not, but nobody stopped me." Well, this is content in a book in one of the, in three of the high schools in this county.
Thank you, Crystal.
I don't need to say anymore.
Well, I guess tonight is a happy occasion with all the valedictorians and salutatorians. Great. My name is Jackie Mendez. I'm with Moms for Liberty here in Campbell County, and I reside in Ebbington. Two things I want to talk about, safety. With recent violence events around the country is Campbell County Public Schools working with a credible organization that specializes in active shooter training to complement the office of the sheriff. School safety is necessary in all 13 buildings around the county. We would like to see the plans in use and those under consideration. This is a priority for this school board, because we want to be proactive instead of reactive. So I encourage the school board to provide more resources to secure our schools and support law enforcement. Curriculum. Parents really have four choices to educate their kids: government schools, public schools, this, private, homeschool and charter. Now, just thinking a little bit and doing a little bit of research, I don't know if you guys know Hillsdale College, which is a prominent, small liberal arts college in Hillsdale, Michigan. It's probably one of the more conservative schools in the country, and conservative meaning teaching the right material, not woke stuff that she or he or, I haven't seen any pronouns in any of your signatures, it seems to be in style now. But K-12 education is not rocket science. Children need skills and knowledge to be good citizens. We want them to be good, aim to be good and see the good in others. Reasonable questions to ask this board here. Skills, reading, writing and arithmetic, knowledge of the natural world through science, moral and philosophical teachings through world history and literature. These are the fundamentals that we speak at every school board meeting here. These are the fundamentals, not CRT, not social emotional learning, teachers are not psychiatrists and not psychologists, they're trained to teach. Again, it's not rocket science. So this board is divorced from the good and the right. Moms for Liberty seeks to restore the schools back to parents, to teachers and to students, not the unions, not the VSPA, not state ed and other bureaucratic stakeholders. Finally, I don't know if you guys, gentlemen, are aware, but social media, television, talk shows are covering meetings with school board members around Virginia. Parents and citizens are just fed up, so getting questions answered and accountability is lacking across Virginia, and this needs to change. And I think I want to leave you with these parting words, I don't think an incumbent has a chance in the next election. So perpetuity, perpetuity is not an option. Thanks.
Thank you. I believe that's all the speakers we had. All right, so next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from both the May 9th and May 16th meetings. So I think we can group them together.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Any questions or discussion on the minutes? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
is Campbell County Public Schools working with a credible organization that specializes in active shooter training to complement the office of the sheriff. School safety is necessary in all thirteen buildings around the county. We would like to see the plans in use and those under consideration. This is a priority for this school board, because we want to be proactive instead of reactive. So I encourage the school board to provide more resources to secure our schools and support law enforcement. Curriculum. Parents really have four choices to educate their kids: government schools, public schools, this, private, homeschool, and charter. Now, just thinking a little bit and doing a little bit of research, I don't know if you guys know Hillsdale College, which is a prominent small liberal arts college in Hillsdale, Michigan. It's probably one of the more conservative schools in the country, and conservative meaning teaching the right material, not woke stuff that she or he or, I haven't seen any pronouns in any of your signatures, it seems to be in style now. But K-12 education is not rocket science. Children need skills and knowledge to be good citizens. We want them to be good, aim to be good, and see the good in others. Reasonable questions to ask this board here. Skills, reading, writing, and arithmetic. Knowledge of the natural world through science, moral and philosophical teachings through world history and literature. These are the fundamentals that we speak at every school board meeting here. These are the fundamentals, not CRT, not social emotional learning, teachers are not psychiatrists and not psychologists, they're trained to teach. Again, it's not rocket science. So this board is divorced from the good and the right. Moms for Liberty seeks to restore the schools back to parents, to teachers, and to students, not the unions, not the V S B A, not state ed, and other bureaucratic stakeholders. Finally, I don't know if you guys, gentlemen, are aware, but social media, television, talk shows are covering meetings with school board members around Virginia. Parents and citizens are just fed up, so getting questions answered and accountability is lacking across Virginia, and this needs to change. And I think I want to leave you with these parting words. I don't think an incumbent has a chance in the next election. So perpetuity, perpetuity is not an option. Thanks.
Thank you. I believe that's all the speakers we had. All right, so next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from both the May ninth and May sixteenth meetings. So I think we can group them together.
Motion.
Second.
Any questions or discussion on the minutes? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Payment of the bills.
Move we pay the bills as presented?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any question on the bills? All in favor of paying, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Acceptance of donations, Ms. McLaughlin.
Tonight, you have eighteen donations that were listed in the meeting on board docs, unless you have any questions, I ask that you approve them as presented.
Motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions about the donations? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Supplemental transfer appropriations.
Tonight, you have thirteen appropriations listed for approval, unless you have any questions, I ask that you approve them as presented.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions for Ms. McLaughlin? All in favor of accepting that? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, and then we have the year-end resolution.
Yes, tonight, you have the resolution that we present every June for us to close out the books at the end of the year.
Motion.
Second.
Everything pretty much in order?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, any other questions? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Dr. Johnson, Title A, Title II, Title III, and Title IV.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Annually, you are presented with the Title I, II, III, and IV federal grants. Those are grant programs that we submit information in and get that from the federal government. The Title I grant primarily deals with salaries and benefits for Title I teachers, literacy coaches, and math coaches, materials, and supplies. Title II is salary and benefits for three full-time primary grade teachers, and to reduce teacher-student ratios. Title III, smaller grants, supplemental resources to support effective instruction, funds for professional development. And then Title IV, Part A, again, salaries and benefits for school psychologists, that's part of the safe and healthy students in schools, partnered with CBCC for the career coaches, STEM curriculum, and teacher stipends for STEM and computer science, technology integration. We have those grants, if you're interested in seeing those, they were posted. If you want to read them, that's just a quick overview, but annually, we do have to adopt those.
Is the funding stable?
Funding is, you know, stable. Note that that's a different fiscal year. That's a, then our June, I guess, June 30, July 1, this is September, October, so, but we've been told to fund what we expected last year.
Have we ever been turned down for any of these?
No.
Good.
They, the funding's been reduced at times.
Yeah, but not.
But no, not rejected, no. Our instructional staff and Ms. Mason do a good job of accounting for all of that, getting the grants written and submitted, and then tracking them through the instruction department, as well as the business department. Angela does a great job doing that.
Ms. Chairman, I move that we approve the four grants for approval, Title I, II, III, and IV.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion carries. All right, comprehensive plan, Dr. Johnson.
Actually, that's going to be Dr. Stanley.
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. As you know, last month, we brought to you the comprehensive plan that will carry us through the next five years as a guiding document that really guides our work, and we've had, got posted for comment for the past month. We've got one slight change, really have more of a point of clarification, that follows on your focus area, One Curriculum and Instruction, under Objective II. One of our strategies was to evaluate regional programs for enrollment transit enrollment, and we wanted to really explain the why behind that, and the why is to maximize the opportunities that we're providing for our students, whether that's vet school, whether that's early college, whether that's dual enrollment program, we just want to make sure that we are maximizing the opportunities there each year.
Thank you.
So other than that change, everything else is still the same, and I would ask that you approve that tonight.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I'd just like to say that I met with Dr. Stanley, and we dug a little deeper for clarification, but I'm very optimistic about the plan, and, you know, and I would ask that we have a yearly update as far as how we think we're doing, where we're making progress, or where we're still struggling. So I guess might we just shoot for next June, if we're adopting it, that next June, we get an update on the agenda.
Is that good, Angela?
Yeah.
All right, well, good. So we have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Dr. Stanley. All right, the amendment to the school operating budget.
Okay, Ms. Chairman, you may have heard that the General Assembly was back in Richmond, I think, June the first. The conference committee had agreed upon a budget, it was adopted, it was passed by the General Assembly. I'm not real sure what happened over the next few days, but anyway, once it reaches the governor's desk, gets seven days to sign it, I think it reached his desk last Friday, I'm not sure where the other seven day, the days were in between. But anyway, he, unless he did something today that I'm not seeing in news feed or anything about, the governor has not yet signed the budget.
Right.
So, but we believe, and been told, that materially, the K-12 portion of the budget will not change significantly. So what we've done is taken the new calculation tool that's prepared once the budget is approved, and readjusted our budget. And let me just tell you that across the entire budget, it actually went up to the tune of almost four hundred thousand dollars from what we adopted in February. But they moved, like they always do, lots of things got moved around. You'll see in the list of some of the positions, we have less of the reading specialists, some of that money was taken away, okay? But, you know, we've also reevaluated that, so I will tell you what we did, nothing materially or any of your initiatives that you were interested in. The five percent pay raise is still in the budget, is still in this budget. We took the, when you look at this budget, a lot of the lines changed because we took the single line with a little over eight hundred thousand, and we readjusted the teacher pay scale, so that money has now been embedded in the compensation lines throughout the budget, so that's why they have changed. So what that means is everyone will get at least a five, some are going to get more, depending on where they are on that teacher, you know, pay scale. The, what's in this budget is an increase in minimum wage to thirteen dollars for all of our classified employees. We still have in there the transportation bus drivers starting paid fifteen fifty-two. That was an objective or initiative that you were interested in. The school construction grant was reduced, we're still working through that to see, you know, but we think that that can have some benefits for us, especially in our capital plan moving forward in the Brooklyn attendance area. I will tell you that the additional money that came, we did three main things with that: fuel, natural gas, electricity, and then we had to, our risk and liability insurance premium or renewal came due since you last adopted the budget, and that was increased primarily for, due to workers' compensation, and we put the additional money, rest of the money there to balance that line. So that's, so other than that, nothing in the budget has changed, other than we took the, you'll see when you look in the budget, the one single line of the eight hundred thousand is now gone, it's distributed throughout all the compensation lines in the budget. And then on the sheet that I gave you here, you'll see that where some of these positions have changed, where we, some of it is due to need, for example, additional speech, we've been contracting those services out, we were not getting, that was not going well for us, so we're going to hire speech, and then you'll see that we've had several para pros in there in special education due to those numbers increasing that we've had to add since the last meeting, but overall, those are what we have done. So with that, I'll pause and ask what questions that you have.
The school construction grant, that wasn't money, that was going to be new money.
That was going to be new money.
So it wasn't like we're going to miss it if we don't get it.
That's correct. So it's, we still got some.
Got some, but it's just not.
We didn't get that much.
Got over three billion, yes.
Yeah.
But not, not quite, not three point eight.
Yeah, that's right.
That was in the favorable budget.
Yeah, thank you.
So overall, it's a good budget?
Yeah, yeah.
But I will say, again, I know that Amy's sitting back there in personnel, we got principals, that had interviewed for some of these positions, some of them have already been filled due to numbers, so we had to fill those, but if they were new, I've not granted permission to issue any contracts until ink is on the paper, so we know that the budget's not changing. I don't think it will, but at the same time, I don't want to do anything until we know that it's adopted.
So we have to, we need to move on, so any other questions?
In regard.
Well, we haven't looked at the details, but.
In regard to the paraprofessional which came up tonight, the paraprofessional pay scale, I don't know if you can have familiar to speak to that tonight, or maybe we can circle back?
Well, it's gone up in this budget to thirteen dollars an hour.
Just for the minimum wage.
For the minimum wage, so it has increased, yes. And it depends on the number of hours that that para pro works, so I can't say what a starting salary might be, depending on the number of hours. But the, we have increased the, beyond what we are, we supposed to, this is a plan that we've had in there for several years, to incrementally increase that minimum wage, but remember what I said, when you increase a minimum wage, you got to move that whole scale. So it's costly. Unless, or if you don't, then all of a sudden, you're going to have entry folks in at this level, and people that have been with us for ten years get, being paid the same amount. So yes, that will be addressed somewhat in this budget.
Any other questions? All right, so we've already approved the budget, but we now have an amendment, so we need a motion to approve the amendment.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Good, motion carries. Ms. Hunley, Personnel Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. You have the Personnel Report in front of you, unless you have any questions, I'd ask that you approve it as written.
Move for approval. Second.
Any questions? Seemed like it was a long list this time.
It was, that's what I was waiting. I figured there'd be something. I did not, no, we did not. No, we do have a longer list than normal right now. We have about, right at thirty positions open. Principals have done a great job filling them as we've been going. Now that school's ended, that's really what they're focusing on, but we do have a number of openings right now.
Yeah, you have a feel for why we had so many?
You know, we have talked about that. We're doing, and we've done an exit survey for the last several years. We did amend it this year to make it a little bit more specific, so we can gather that information about specific reasons, but they, as I'm going through them, they vary. I mean, I can compile that, maybe towards the beginning of the school year, but it's various reasons, personal, going to another division, getting out of teaching, so not one reason is glaring, is glaring.
But the numbers are in line with that trend, David?
Yes.
The percentages are still?
Right now.
Okay.
Does everybody fill that survey out when they leave?
They don't have to. So we set reminders where they would get emails several times before their account is deactivated and Talanet, our online personnel system, but we did, we did send several reminders in an effort to get.
So what percentage would you say you get?
I don't know that answer. I can find out for you. I will say we made a better effort this year, like I said, to send reminders, because we really wanted to gather that information before it only sent one time, and if they didn't do it, they didn't do it. But I can get all of that information and maybe give you a report closer to the beginning of school year.
Okay, be fine, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd be interested in a report, you know, seasoned teachers versus new teachers.
It is more new teachers, I can tell you that, just kind of glancing at it, yes. Yes, it's that zero to five range of new teachers that decide to go in a different direction, or, like I said, but one reason is not glaring to me right now, when we compile it, I can show you that, though.
How are we doing with substitute teachers? Are we still, is that a struggle still?
It, towards the end of the year, it was, you know, kind of February, March, April, when our COVID absences were reducing, they were better. May was a little bit harder, you know, we require subs for testing and things like that, so the daily attendance report was a little higher again. We hire every sub that's qualified, so we are hiring every applicant, that there's just, there's not as many applicants. Yeah. We did do a, with CARES money, a stipend in the month of March to pay substitutes that work the max number of days with us, because we do have substitutes that work for other counties as well, so we were trying to encourage them to work more often for us, and we're going to do that again in the fall, at the beginning of the school year, so we are trying some different things there.
Is your pipeline of incoming teachers consistent with what it's been in the past? Are you seeing a decrease in that, or?
The number of applicants?
Yeah.
I would say it's probably decreased a little bit, especially in certain areas.
Okay. Think we're going to be able to fill our, these openings?
I feel like we will, some of them, that's a loaded question. There might be some instances where we are going to have to work on licensures for some of these folks, where they may not be completely licensed at the beginning of the year, but we can get them there, but more often than we've done in the past.
But in this budget, we've taken some steps to help mentor and help these, you know, teachers make it, and hopefully, you know, that number will be reduced, and we'll keep some of those.
Yeah. We're going to get back to the mentoring that we were doing pre-COVID again, and kind of put down some expectations for that, for new teachers and mentors. It's hard to ask our mentors to mentor new teachers when this year was such a struggle for everyone, but we have some great teachers that I know want to see our new teachers be successful, so we need to do a little bit better with that.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. We need a motion to approve the Personnel Report.
We got a motion and a second.
Oh, we already did that? Okay, yeah, thank you, I'm sorry. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you, Ms. Hunley.
Thank you.
Mr. Sisk, Second Reading on Proposed Policy.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Tonight, we're going to pull the second reading for this particular policy and do some rewrites on it, and I'll be bringing that back in the near future. So no questions, thank you.
All right, thank you. School, local school audit board, Ms. McLaughlin?
Just for your information, we're open before they come and do the local school audit.
We don't need a motion on that, right? Any questions for her about that? Thank you. All right, Dr. Johnson.
I think, Ms. Chairman, we have posted the joint committee minutes for you to take a look at. Any questions, let us know, and I wanted to just mention to you one thing that we've been discussing, I've spoken to several of you, talked to you about this. With the price of gas and things of that nature, we are considering for the month of July, possibly the first week in August, to institute a flex schedule, work schedule, for primarily for our classified folks, to give them a break. I know it's small, but maybe one day, you know, a week, that they may not have to drive into work, they can work four, ten hours. The offices and school will be open five days a week, normal hours, we just have to work it amongst staff and scheduling, just to try to give them, you know, a break during that short period of time before school brings back up. Any relief would be helpful. So we're considering that, I've spoken to several of you, seem in favor of doing that, doesn't require any action, but I just would be interested to know if there's any concerns in doing that. Again, school's going to be open, offices open, Monday through Friday, normal work hours, but staff will be able to schedule and possibly one day a week not have to drive into work. I know other divisions do that, close around, some of them take a, you know, just shut down on a Friday or a. down on a Friday or a Monday, I'm, I'm not interested in doing that.
Any questions? Sounds, sounds reasonable to me.
That's all I have.
All right, Board, we'll start with Mr. Jones.
I guess.
He's not wearing his sling today.
Huh?
He's not wearing your sling today.
It came off, it came off about three hours ago, and I'm feeling like it needs to still be on there, you know? But, uh.
Who tied your tie?
Huh? Oh, I did it, one-handed. Uh, well, just express my appreciation, and I guess, I don't know the right words to say, but Rustburg Middle School, we, we toured that last week, and it's very, very impressive, both inside and outside. It's just pretty much walking through it, and I asked Leon, he said the same thing, when you start walking through it, we reflect back on the finished middle school in Pulaski that we went and toured prior to planning Rustburg Middle School, and trust me, it's gonna be spectacular when they finish it, it's gonna be, it's gonna be jaw-dropping when you go in there, when it's all complete, and it's just, it's just, it's really, really impressive, really amazing. I wanna give a shout-out to Zach Bryant, who's the Assistant Superintendent of the project, he's a Rustburg High School graduate, is the son of a Concord Elementary retired teacher, so he was really helpful and stayed with us during the whole tour, very knowledgeable young man, very impressive, attended the Rustburg High School Awards Program a couple weeks ago, just outstanding students graduating. Dr. Hale told me that of the Rustburg graduates, between two-point-nine and three million dollars worth of scholarships were given to the graduates, which is really, really amazing. That's really impressive, but I think the most impressive thing I saw during the graduation period was I attended a pre-grade, pre-K graduation ceremony at Concord Elementary School, and witnessed, I believe, eighteen to twenty-five-year-olds sitting still and behaving, listening, singing, participating. I don't know how they did it, but it was truly touching to see all of them doing that, and my hat's off to Dr. Renulla and the teachers and the aides for whatever they're, whatever they're doing, they're doing something right, and I mean, those kids are ready for kindergarten next year, is all I can say, and, and it's, it's really, really rewarding. Tonight's valedictorians and salutatorians just, just continues to impress me and I think the whole Board of their constipations, what they've done so far, and gosh, what they'll do in the future, it's just, it's just amazing. We gotta thank the parents and the, the people that kept them focused, you know, there's, there's been a lot of times, I'm sure, when they could've taken different choices and had different consequences, but I'm sure their parents, you know, helped, you know, keep them foc, you know, focused, and we just appreciate that, and not just the ones that graduate from high school, all the students that are advancing, I mean, congratulations to all of those, I mean, they got, starting new again next year, and it's just great. Again, the donations we've received this month, just appreciate them from the bottom of our hearts, and they'll do a lot of good, that's all I got.
Thank you, Barry. Mr. Phillips?
Barry about covered everything there, I think, but no, to reiterate, congratulations to all of our graduates. Dr. Hale did share, you mentioned the three million dollars in scholarships, was, is a testament to the, what they've accomplished through their academic career to, to be considered for that size dollar amount of scholarships, that's a great, great accomplishment there as well. Thanks for our speakers tonight, and thanks for the salutatorians, valedictorians coming out, great to hear from them, and, yeah, it was a great tour of the middle school, like Barry said, really impressive, really looking forward to that, coming online next year, not quite as early as we had hoped, the supply chain is affecting that project as it is with every other thing that's trying to move forward now, so a little bit of a challenge we're facing there, but well underway and looking great, and I think that's all I had tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. Sir, Jefferson?
I just echo Mr. Jones's comments about the Rustburg Middle School, really an impressive building, I can't wait to walk into the finished building, it's gonna be so awesome. Like to congratulate the valedictorians and salutatorians for this year, also like to congratulate all the other graduates as well, it's been a tough year, but it was really nice walking, or sitting, or attending the Brookfield graduation last week, just having all the kids come up and got to personally shake hands with, with every senior that graduated, so really enjoyed that, having the opportunity to do that. I think that's about it, so, thanks a lot.
Mr. Adams?
I'd like to thank Mr. Prophet and his staff for an excellent graduation, I was very impressed on how everything ran, but I was more impressed at our senior awards day, 'cause the power went off, and they did it in the dark, and it went well, and everybody behaved, and it was, glad to see the kids get what they got, at least half of them, but, so I'd like to thank Dr. Johnson for taking me and Leon on it, another tour, we couldn't make the first tour to Rustburg Middle, and I would like for you to let me know when demo day is, because the new school is three feet from the old school, and how in the world they gonna tear that down is beyond me. And, and one last thing, Keegan DeBernard, a graduating senior, received the VHSL Achievement Awards Scholarship, she was one of nineteen in the state of Virginia to get it, and I believe the only one from Campbell County's ever got, I might be wrong on that, I've never heard of. And she also was chosen Class One Female Athlete of the Year, and I know Leon don't wanna go here this, but she's going for Virginia Tech.
Fine, that's cool.
That's all I got, thank you.
Do wanna thank all the students we had tonight, eight of them, well, some of them were here, but the eighth one could not be here, but congratulations to all, all of them, like someone said earlier tonight, it's what we look forward to every year, is seeing these young people come to us, and I know they're gonna be very successful, they and many others, and all the others that graduated at the high schools. I did attend backlog service for Brookfield High School and some awards banquet, I think, Ms. White, if I'm correct, it was right at two-point-eight million that we'd give in scholarships, and so that is just something to be proud of. Also, wanna congratulate Ms. White for finishing her first year as principal, she's done a great job, and thanks to all the parents, students, and all the employees of the Campbell County School System for a tough, tough year, appreciation goes there to all. Again, Rustburg Middle School is gonna be state-of-the-art, and something we're gonna be very proud of. Gary and I couldn't be there, like you said, I had to be in Shawesville with my wife, but other than that, it's, it's been, I think, a busy summer, and we look forward to the challenges that we have, and anyway, we can help you, Amy, get those thirty-some hired, we'd be glad to help you in any way we can. Okay, that's all I have.
Yeah, thank you, I don't have a lot to add, other than, you know, I'm proud to be a member of Board for Campbell County Schools, 'cause we certainly get to see what, you know, the, what's produced here, and see these kids with all their achievements, and just one merit after the other, and that kind of effort that they put forward, and, and then, and all of our graduates have to put forward a lot of effort to, to be able to graduate, so I, I think we're doing a good job in our, you know, I think our teachers and our principals are doing a great job. I, too, am excited to see the finished project at Rustburg Middle, it's, it's just, you know, I, and we'll, we'll have an open house, so everybody can get to see it, but it's impressive, it really is, we're gonna, I, I think they'll be coming from miles around to see our school before they build theirs, so, and then, I just wanna, hope everybody has a good summer, I know we're still working, but maybe with the summer attitude and, and just that everything keeps going forward in a good way, and that we gear up for next year. Thank you. And at that point, I believe we have to adjourn for a closed meeting, so I will ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we convene in a closed meeting for discussion or consideration of disciplinary matters or other matters that would involve disclosure of information contained in a scholastic record concerning a student in the school division, specifically student number forty-two from the 2021-22 school year, in accordance with Section 2.2-3711A2 of the Code of Virginia, 1950 as amended.
Second.
If a motion is second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We'll take a five-minute recess. We'll take a five-minute recess.